HK, do you lead us in prayer?
Yes, there's tadpoles here. Father, just thank you for this beautiful day you've given to us and again coming here to serve the people of our town and our community. We thank you for that privilege. We pray that all that's said and done tonight will be in your will. We pray for those who serve our country and serve all of our communities throughout this land. Lead with them as they make decisions for our people. Forgive us of our sins in Jesus' name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody have a minute to look at the minutes from the last meeting. I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I wish may it.
Need a second?
Say.
All favor? Any opposed? Okay, well, the first thing we have on our agenda tonight is the Grace Hall Memorial Christmas Decoration Winners are here with us. Hey, this is the first year we've done this and we thought we had a pretty good turnout for it to be the first year and all the houses, there was eight, I believe, that ended up in the house decorating contest. And it got pretty cold, pretty rainy and windy the night that we were, I went out with the judges to take them out to where the houses were. And we were just hoping that we could make it through before it got too bad. But great job on all the houses. They did, all of them did an excellent job. We had first, second, third place. Our first place winners are here tonight. So we want to congratulate them, Jason and Amy Wilson. We just appreciate everything that you all did and hit in the contest because I know it's a lot of work, especially when the weather's bad and you come home and everything's flown down or the lights don't work and you have to keep all that going all the way up to the time we got the judges done. But we appreciate that you all threw that. We do have a plaque we'd like to present to you. And then what we're gonna ask you to do is let us keep this plaque here at the city. We'll put it out front, the city hall for everybody to see. And then we hope to keep it going for quite a few years and just add to this each year. But you'll be the first, first name on it. So. It's pretty cool, too. It's pretty nice, I think. But anyway, this is just, it says "Christmas by Grace: Annual Decoration Contest in Memory of Grace Colleen Hall." And then it's got Jason and Amy Wilson 2022. We put this in the outback and we had a lot of fun. So we enjoyed it.
We would work on it next year.
Well, good. We appreciate it and hope that we get more, but hope that you do a good job next year like you did this year.
Thank you.
Yes, we did, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Heather Stevenson with us from the Kentucky Rural Water.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think you're gonna talk to us about apprentices program.
I am. Thank you for the opportunity, ma'am. I wanna thank, I wanna thank Jamestown for inviting me to speak tonight about, I really like to back up and speak about the value of water when I'm talking about the apprenticeship program. Because when we're talking about investing in our workforce, I think it's good for us to remember why that's such an important investment. So if you all will allow me to, I'd like to give a brief presentation on the value of water and those that provide it to your community. And I would like to mention that when I first started in the water industry, my very first tour was a water treatment plant and a wastewater treatment plant in Jamestown. And my eyes were opened from then on at the intricacies of the job, the technical skill sets that are required of it, and the importance that, that these people play in your communities. So without further ado, I just ask that you consider what's your water cost? And it's somewhat of a loaded question, right? But it is more than the rates that you set for those that are paying water bills, right? Of course, the, the rates that the city sets, the municipal rates that you pass on to your customers, you know, of course, there is a value in that amount that you set. And, and there's things that go into making that, making this rate, things that should be considered. How much does it cost to maintain and, and operate that system to keep it up when things go wrong? What's it gonna cost to fix it? But oftentimes, what's not thought of is the cost of those that are ensuring that that system keeps flowing, right? So when we're talking a little more about the value of water, and again, this goes beyond just the cost that you pay for it, we have to consider what thirst means. And thirst is, you know, at its, on its face, it's the feeling of the need to drink, right? We know what it feels like to be thirsty, but it's also to have a strong desire or something. In terms of what your customers and your community wants, they, they expect that when they turn on their faucets, that they're gonna get, that something's gonna come out of it first of all, right? And then it's also gonna be safe and it's gonna taste good, right? Because of all the different ways that we use it. So when we think about thirst and we consider that in the value equation, of course, value is just the, the value, the regard that we should hold something. And I'll tell you right now that all of us are guilty of taking water for granted. And so we tend to not value it the way that we should. I like to tell people, it is a thirsty world. And what do I mean by that? We're thirsty in a lot of different ways. Industry is thirsty. You've got quite a bit of industry here in Russell County. And it's, it's not just the, the customers that are buying for residential use, right? When products are made, one pair of jeans, seven, oh, seventy-two fifty liters to make a pair of jeans. A pair of socks, three hundred and seventy-five liters of water. So when, when people are producing things in your community to sell, you know, that's part of your economic development. You want to recruit industry into your community, right? We all want our communities to grow. And part of the economic development, part of that, that whole consideration is, is the infrastructure there, that you can attract other people so that your businesses, so your community can grow. Because people need water to develop their products. In Kentucky especially, we have over forty-five hundred manufacturing facilities in Kentucky. It employs over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand people in our state and contributes quite a bit to our annual GDP. One of those big industries is bourbon and beer, right? Ninety-five percent of the world's bourbon is made in Kentucky. And you can't have bourbon or beer, which is a big part of our, of our state's industry. You can't have it without a fresh water supply. This is an example of that. This is from a water tower that is supplied by Lebanon Water Works in, in Lebanon, in Marion County, Kentucky. And they are letting people know they partnered with Makers Mark Distillery to say, hey, they're getting their water supply from your local community water supplier. And they actually, I just talked to the general manager of, of Lebanon, and he was telling me about two or three more businesses, one of them being a distillery coming to Lebanon. So they are growing and they are showing that they have the capacity to bring in new businesses and they can support the infrastructure needs that they have. I got to take a picture with it. They, they make it a fun thing and a, an attraction. They kind of say, hey, take your picture with our pool water tower. Agriculture is thirsty. How many farms do you have in Russell County? One of my, one of my son's books that he, I would read him while we were, when he was growing up, you know, he was, he could barely talk, but I'm reading him stories about farm animals. And the one that always stuck out to me was a cow can drink a bathtub full of water every day. A cow, one single cow. So our farmers, in order to be able to allow them to grow and cultivate their products, it's, it's also the, the crops that are grown, they have to have water. And it has to be safe and reliable. We have over fifty percent of our acreage, sorry, in Kentucky is farmland. And so our seventy-six thousand farms in our state, and you can, if somebody, you know, could tell me how many there are in, in Russell County, that are depending on the services that you all provide to ensure that they can produce their products. And then we are thirsty, right? It's, it's obvious that we have a need to drink, to live. Our bodies, we can handle, I've never tested this theory and hope I never have to, but scientists tell us that we can live a month without food. But our bodies cannot survive a week without water. It is, water is life, right? And we use it not just to hydrate, our bodies tell us when we're thirsty, but we use it in all these different ways. We cook with it, we bathe with it, you know? During COVID, we were told to wash our hands, you know, around the clock. If you, if you wanna wash your hands and stay clean and have good hygiene, you need clean water to do it, right? But it's not just in, you know, the, the food and the drink and the, and the bathing, doing laundry, all of those things. But a lot of the recreational activities that we enjoy, I mean, we have a pretty big recreational venue right here, right, in Lake Cumberland. And, and a lot of things that we have, a lot more people have pools these days, right? It takes a, a water supply to fill up a pool. So we have and enjoy water in so many different ways, and our thirst for water continues to grow. This is an example on a larger level, but for the first time ever, this is from the past Winter Olympics, over ninety percent of the snow was artificial. It had to be manufactured. I see this is the, the future of winter sports. But can you imagine that water bill? So would you agree with me when I say it is a thirsty world?
Yes, ma'am.
And also that water is life because we can't go without it. So it's a good thing we have so much of it, right? It's everywhere we look. But even though it covers most of the planet, only about three percent of it is fresh water. And of that three percent, most of that is trapped in ice. So of the three percent fresh water that there is, and most of that being trapped in ice, less than one percent of fresh water is readily available for human consumption. Kind of mind blowing, right? You see the value start trickling up some? So water, it's a limited resource. It's not infinite. We'd like to think it is, but the same water that was here since the beginning of time is the water that we have today. And we, as a human race, are tasked with taking care of the supply that we have that is finite. And it's, it's, it's humbling when you think of it in this way. But we keep reusing the source that we have, the water sources that we have, and that's through the water cycle. But it's just, when you think of it in those terms, I'll bring up my, my son again. He, his mind was blown when he was talking about this or we were talking about this. And, and I heard somebody say, well, you drink the same water that dinosaurs used to drink from. You drank the same water, you know, you could be drinking dinosaur pee. That's a lot of scientists like to get their teaching with that, and a lot of teachers. But, you know, when you think of it in that context, the, the water that we have, we need to be good stewards of. And, and we can't solve the world's water problems, but what we have to look at is the water that we are tasked with, with carrying for in our own communities. A quarter of all the water that comes into our homes, you know what it's used for? To flush your toilets. It takes about three gallons of water. Now, some, there are flow flow toilets now, right? But on average, about three gallons per flush. So how many people live in your house? How many times a day are you flushing? How many loads a liter do you do? Anywhere between fifteen to thirty gallons. A ten-minute shower, about twenty gallons of water. Brushing your teeth, if you leave the tap water running, you're using about four gallons of water. So easy way to teach conservation is turn that tap off while you're brushing your teeth, right? But it's easy to see how Americans use eighty to a hundred gallons of water a day, right? Over the US, about three-hundred-and-twenty-two billion gallons of water are used each day. And it takes about nine days for that much water to go over Niagara Falls. About that, that's pretty crazy, right? Meanwhile, there are people around the world, and even, there's even some in the US that don't have access to safe water. And many of them are living on less than what it takes us to flush our toilets. They're having to walk for hours to get to a clean water supply and then carry it back. That's humbling to me when you think of that. Our water sources are under, under pressure. And again, it's, it's hard for us to fathom this maybe because it's everywhere we see or everywhere we look in Kentucky, right? But the US population has doubled in the US in the past fifty years, but our thirst for water in all the ways that we use it has tripled. So there are at least forty states by next year anticipating water shortages. You see it and you can read about it. You know, there's a lot of talk out west. The Los Angeles Basin, their water supply hits support about a million people. Problem is, there are almost four million people that live there, right? Do you all recognize this? Anybody ever been there? It's the Hoover Dam. On the left side is from nineteen eighty-three. You see on the right side just how much that the water levels have dropped. There's another, another view of it. You can see this. This is from twenty twenty-one. Hoover Dam reservoir is at an all-time low. It's bringing things up like they're finding human remains in barrels, you know, that people have dumped in the lake they didn't think would ever surface. I think they found at least six or seven, maybe more by this point. But at this time, this was in May of twenty-two, but it was listed at about thirty-five percent full. El Paso and San Antonio, it's estimated they could run out of water in ten to twenty years. I can tell you, I took a trip to San Antonio over the summer, and I was blown away with conservation efforts and how, you know, just talking to the, to the general public, how conservation was on their minds and how they knew how important it was to conserve water and the value of their water supply. Central Florida even, it's been said that they could run out in less than five years. This is from October of twenty-two. Eighty-two, over eighty-two percent of the US was considered drought or in a drought. And that's from the US drought monitor, the highest percentage since records began in two thousand. So what does that mean for water use? You, you read things about water restrictions and water rights. It's not really something, again, that, that we hear too much of here locally, right? Again, it's what's so great about Kentucky. You all recognize this picture here? This is something that, especially here locally, you know, we've got Lake Cumberland, you know, the, the statistics that, that I heard growing up, you know, all the, it has more shoreline than, than the state of Oregon. However, many thousands of gallons of water are in Lake Cumberland, you know, it's the source water for us, for utilities, for several utilities, not just in Russell County, right? Other than Alaska, Kentucky as a whole has more navigable waters than anywhere in the US. So we don't think it's a problem here, do we? We don't think about it. But the problem is that we are part of the global economy, right? Water shortages may not occur everywhere, but it's not gonna be long before we see the consequences of it. And, and we already have in, in places. And it's even been said that we're gonna run out of water before we run out of oil. And you know how crazy it gets when you start seeing oil prices go up and the frenzy that people get into, right? It's pretty crazy. But in some countries, the groundwater is, is almost gone just due to over pumping and over consumption. Those depleted aquifers, what happens there? It leads to cutbacks. And, and the grain harvest, what does that lead to? Food shortages and higher prices. The demand goes up, right? Because what happened to toilet paper during COVID? Everybody went out to buy. You had people trying to sell it for, you know, a hundred, two hundred bucks for maybe a six-rolle, I don't know. But, but people, you know, it causes a frenzy. But how many of you all have went to the grocery store and seen higher prices in the last? And I'm not saying it's all because of the water supply, but it is a significant part of it. So even though we're not experiencing water shortages here, we are affected by it. You can see different, if you just Google water shortages, and you're gonna find all kinds of information. But this is something I thought was, this was from September of twenty-two. American Farm Bureau Federation suggests that yields could be down by as much as a third this year compared to last year just due to extreme drought and heat. So again, you know, we're all affected. So what does it all mean and why am I sharing this with you? What is your point? I thought she was gonna talk about apprenticeship program and, and workforce. Well, I think that it has everything to do with it. Because in my mind, a better understanding of the value of the product and that, and something that you were tasked with overseeing, a better understanding of its value is going to place a, a larger value on the product itself. And it should place a larger value on the people that are producing it and providing it and, and looking over it in your communities. Because operators drinking water and wastewater, they are on the front lines. They are public health officials. They ensure that you have a safe water supply. There are a lot of things that have to be done to ensure that. They provide access to that safe drinking water and then they ensure that before they release it back to the source water, that it's clean and, and able to go back. So it's time that we all give water a second thought. And with the water utilities and what they are tasked to do, you know, they have to, at a local level, manage their water supply and their distribution, their infrastructure for water and wastewater services. They are tasked with overseeing that. You were tasked with giving them the resources to be able to do it. And so that is a, a large load to carry. But you have to remember that the services, like we, like we talked about, if we want communities to thrive and we want to see economic development, we have to remember that our infrastructure has to support our farms. They have to support our businesses, our hospitals, our schools. What happens when, you know, the water supply goes down, you know, water, water's cut off to a school system? What happens, you know, if it happens in a hospital? So I just, the point that I wanna get across to you is that we must all collectively remember the value of this product. And we can't ever allow the importance of the work to be minimized. Because no matter what role you play, and again, you all play a role in that, you're protecting and providing, you know, what I think is the most important resource that there is, and that's clean water. And so I want to thank you all personally for being willing to invest in the apprenticeship program and the structured training of those that are learning how to take care of the water supply and, and the things that they need to know to make sure that services continue. Because you have a lot, you have a lot of experience sitting in this room. Dale, thirty-five years?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six years. Thirty-six years of experience in the industry. And, you know, we're, we're in the middle of a concentrated retirement bubble in this industry. It's not something that we're just seeing here. It's not something we're just seeing in the state of Kentucky. Nationwide, we have a shortage of operators. And so collectively, we have to look at what we're going to do to address it. And the apprenticeship has been a way for us to recruit, one, to tell people about the water industry and the wastewater industry and the good jobs that there are available to people in your community, two, people that want to make a difference and that care about the health of your community. And I'll, I'll leave you with a couple more thoughts. You know, I like to, I do like to discuss this because, you know, you say, well, I get it, you know, we get it, we talk about it all the time, but our customers, they're not, they're not gonna understand whenever we say, oh, well, you know, we need to, we need to raise the water rates because, you know, we, we can't cover the maintenance costs of this, you know, of the system and worry about whether or not we're paying our, our staff enough, right? But communication is the key. Because if you can help tell this story of how important your product is, then they're gonna understand and want to know that you are investing in that infrastructure and the people that run it. And it can be done because the most purchased bottled beverage in twenty twenty, you said, what was it?
Water.
Water, right? So the perception, and this actually started for the first time ever in two thousand sixteen, the volume of bottled water, it actually surpassed every other carbon made beverage. And part of that is the water, the bottled water industry is controlling the story. They're telling their customers and, and the whole world, whoever will listen, that their product is safer than what they can get out of their tap. And they're controlling the story. And so the, the perception is that if they want safe water, they're gonna have to drink bottled water, right? The bottled water industry doesn't tell you that they are subjected to near the regulations that your water and wastewater plants are subjected to. They have to follow all of the regulations that are put forth by EPA. And so they're controlling that narrative. So what we have to do a better job of is communicate. So it starts, it starts here. And it starts within our utilities. Sometimes we need to remind ourselves that, you know, hey, what, this work is important. And our communities wouldn't survive without this. But then it needs to, it needs to be a grassroots effort to go from there. And you can help communicate to your communities just how important it is and the services that you provide. I know I've taken up quite a bit of time, but I I know I've taken up quite a bit of time, but I will say that our apprenticeship program has been a great way to address and get out and tell the public about opportunities in the industry. And it allows us to give a framework to a local utility and say, the more a well-rounded employee, these are the things that, you know, that they should be covering as they're training. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just make you think there's something you didn't realize there was such a near shortage in this country, you know?
It's not something that's in the forefront of our minds, but it's, it's mind-blowing whenever you look at it, you know, from that perspective. So I appreciate the time that you gave me to discuss it. If anybody would like to have any follow-up conversations, I'd be happy to have them. But I'll tell you that, you know, the other thing that I have to tell people, especially when they're worried about bringing in new people, and the biggest concern is, well, one, where are we going to find people once everybody retires? And then how are we going to keep the people that we have now? And what I would like to share with you is that there's data out there. If you're wondering, you know, what are our operators? How does that, how does that relate to neighboring systems? How does that relate statewide? You know, what's the pay scale and the wage structures around the state? And there's data available to do that, to look and see what the average pay of operators are. But I'll also tell you that you just need to take a look at your other industries in your surrounding area. Because they're not just competing, you know, utilities aren't just competing with other utilities. There is a mass shortage of just able-bodied workers, right? We have a low unemployment rate in our state, but that means that there's less people looking for a job. And for every job opening, there are at least two, for every person looking, there are at least two job openings. So there's not enough, there's not enough people to fill open positions. So people start trying to pull from people that are already working. And so, you know, an example that I give is, you know, I see, somebody can go to Dairy Queen and make thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour. And they don't have half of the responsibilities and liabilities that an operator has. They can scoop ice cream and make people smile all day. They get free birthday cakes, you know, on their birthday. They get a 401K. They get, you know, all of these, people are stepping up their game to try to entice new employees and make sure that their current employees aren't going anywhere. And so when you're taking a look at that and when you're looking at annual budgets and things that can be done, I urge you to take into consideration not just what other utilities are paying their employees, but what other industries in your area are as well.
People willing to work is in great shortage right now.
People.
That's why you can set it a wind and click money. McDonald's for fourteen, fifteen dollars.
Yeah, well, because they're.
They need somebody.
They're as desperate, they're as desperate as you are, right? But again, they have a whole lot less responsibilities, you know? It would take a lot more for somebody at McDonald's to go to jail for their job.
Yeah.
And a lot of operators, they carry a big responsibility.
And I guess we take that for granted, really?
It's something I think we're all guilty of. But what I enjoy as part of my job is being able to, to have these discussions and say, hey, you know, consider this and keep this in mind. Because it is, you don't have a community if you don't have access to clean water and those people that know how to run your system. So thank you all for what you do.
Yeah. We have been blessed with a very good group of workers, you know? And some of them are retiring, but they, we still have the bench today, actually. Stay a little longer, you know?
Is your program, your apprentice program tied in with high school and such as that through the apprentice program?
We actually, we don't have an agreement with Russell County High School right now, but.
Well, see, they hired somebody through the workforce or Kentucky Tech one. That's an apprentice director or whatever for the county. We know he's doing five different programs, but that might be some.
Well, so there is, there is a structure in place that we, and we have already recruited high school students. If there are opportunities for a co-op at a utility, a high school student can come and work with the utility. There are opportunities toward their certification that way. And if they're taking schools that are considered a career pathway. So you have an area technology center here. You know, you take a look at what courses are offered. And we are able to use that structure and say, hey, if you're taking classes at the tech school or you're in ag classes or any of the other technical courses. You know, they're taking classes in electrical technology and welding and, I mean, it's, they're really. Yeah, and so we can teach them how to use the skill set that they're learning there in the water and wastewater industry, you know? That's no different than what a lot of other people that find it by accident. They've worked somewhere else for years and years. They have a skill set, but they just have to be trained on how to use that skill set in the water and wastewater industry. But the answer is, yes, we are completely capable of doing that and offering.
I've said, you know, here all are tied together.
No, no. So we work with, it's called the TRAC program, and it's through the Kentucky Department of Education. So they.
I think that's what he.
They, and it's, so it's very likely the same organization. And what they do is they allow a pathway for high school apprentices to transition into. So what we're able to do is say, hey, you get your high school diploma and you complete your co-op and your high school classes. And we're able to credit you X amount of hours toward the apprenticeship program. So as soon as they graduate, they're going to work full-time. And they're already working for their certification. So there is that structure to do that. And that's something if you all would be interested in, you know, a really easy way to get that started is to invite the tech center or some of the classes out to take a tour. So they understand what it means. Our very first apprentice was a wastewater apprentice, and he was right out of high school. And, you know, you're not going to recruit somebody by just saying, hey, especially a high school student, you want to come work at the sewer plant? That young man, the reason that he enrolled as an apprentice and he took that job was that the utility proactively had conversations with him. They knew him, the manager knew him and the community knew he was getting ready to graduate and that he wanted to stay close to home and said, hey, you know, why don't you come out and take a tour of the plant? Let me show you around. Why don't you, you know, so he got him out there and he got to see all the heavy equipment that he would get to run. And he thought that was pretty cool. So that was the first thing that sold him. But he took him out on a construction project, showed him, you know, what that was about. Took him to a couple of factories that they work with, that they, you know, that they treat, the pretreatment process there and everything. So it was a, it was a very proactive approach to that. And that young man is now a Class III wastewater operator. And not only that, but he's, he just bought his own farm. He wanted to stay locally. So that allowed him to do that. And, you know, I really, I really commend that utility for taking the steps and working to get him out there through the door just to give it a chance. Instead of just, hey, I got a job out here at the wastewater plant, you want to come check it out? So, yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm going to need that. Thank you for coming. Thank you all so much. I'll be talking to you. You know, I'll talk to you soon. Well, pretty interesting, huh? And we do appreciate you guys.
Had Dale, he's like me, he ain't going to retire. Ain't you, Dave?
I love your life.
As we're around on a wheelchair.
Just because you got gray hair, don't make me retire, man.
Hey, at least you got hair.
Doesn't make a thing.
No, no, we know there's a lot of work and we all have a lot of responsibility. We do appreciate what you guys do. But anyway, the next thing on our agenda is actually the Bradley Roy Annual Fishing Tournament. And we've done this in the past. We've done it every year. We just did it last year, which the tournaments normally Danielle in October covering. So we did last year, and I think what we've done in the past is $5,000 that we've donated for that brings in all the fishing people and all the people that promotes our area. This year, which I think is a good gesture, they've talked to Danielle and she called me and we talked, discussed a little bit about it as partner and together and splitting the cost. And they would promote a lot of it and do a lot of the promotion through the tourism. And then we would still be promoting it the same and supporting it the same, but we would just go together. So, but Danielle, you have a little bit, you want to?
I just thought, you all have sent the whole $5,000 for several years. And last year was the first year that we actually included a budget line item for advertising in our for fishing tournament. So we've had probably six that we hosted ourselves. And when Anthony, I actually went to the one in October and I visited guys and we took a survey, like an economic impact survey for each person that was there. Where'd you come from? How'd you hear about us? How much did you spend? Did you stay locally? If not, where did you stay? And based on the probably, oh my gosh, 500 people that came through, over $100,000 was spent just in that weekend here in Russell County between lodging, eats, gas, buying. They, so it was huge economic impact. And most tournaments that come here are that or more. Because you have to account for like pre-fishing and things that they come in here and stay. But not just on the tournament, but the week prior to. So it's just, I just wanted to say that, you know, we're willing to split it with you guys this year. You know, we appreciate you guys bringing that in. It's a great tournament. It's always been here locally, they're local on here. But we'd love to take that for cost. I'll go be in Alabam, New York.
I'm sure we'd drop this here in the hospital. We've never been greedy when it comes to. So is that something you need us to give you and do an answer tonight?
I mean, if you all want to, it's like I said, it's not till October of 2020, '23. So we've got plenty of time. You don't have to do the money right now or anything. I just wanted to, it was on my mind. He reached out to me right after the tournament in October, wanted to know if that was something that my office would do. I didn't want to take it from him, but I wanted to offer help just as a, like you said, a faith, a good effort, faith of whatever. But we'd be happy to. I was going to say, I don't know what you all do for your budget. I don't know, we have to have a motion for that, huh?
Yeah, worship for a commitment to do it. We'll put it in next year's budget and we'll learn.
But it would just be 2,500. Like I said, we'll do the advertising for it. I'll show up. I mean, y'all are welcome to show up.
That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Anything else, any other tournaments you all hear about? I mean, like I said, this is the, it's huge economic impact for the county as a whole. So anything you all have, please bring it to me. I'd be happy to help in any way that we can, especially if it's bringing people from outside here. Want to extend that gesture to you all?
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I'd like to try to attract a lot more of these fishing tournaments in the area, especially during the off-season, you know, like the cooler weather months, a lot of tournaments that go on.
So we've done three actually just October and November. But they're like tournaments are, so it's bringing people in from outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've done three this year. Like I said, this is the first year that our office has actually had a budget line item for that, fishing tournaments only. So we're, and I've got two coming. I've got one coming in March, about 250 boats. And then I have two, Bradley Roy and another one in November already, that's reached out wanting us to host those. So potentially, if the one in March goes well, there's a world finals tournament in 2026. It could be really, really big. But we just have to work out the logistics of parking. They like to go up Hoppum Landing and that overflow parking is now leased to work, overflow work. So we're working with the hatchery. They've been kind enough to let us use kind of the parking down there. So parking is a huge issue for these tournaments at the moment. But like I said, we have a lot, a great community that's allowing us to work. State office looking into letting us use one of their vans to transport from the hatchery up to the Hoppum Landing so that they can, you know, put their boat in and then we can drive them so they're not taking time to walk. It just takes, it's a community effort and, you know, mild, it was just now two people. So it's just us trying to do all of this, which so far we've managed. But with the help of you all, the Vass Masters, I mean, that was a huge help. You all were wonderful contributors to that. But yeah, like I said, we're, I'm working for it. I see, I see the benefit. I hope our community sees the benefit. You know, it's not going to be like 300 people coming into a restaurant all at once, but it's the overall impact that those bring to the county over those few weeks. And, you know, I always like to say heads in beds, that's what, that's what we need. And those tournaments do those things. So absolutely. So like I said, anything that you all have, if you hear of one, just send it on my way. And we'll see, we'd love to be a part and help with that.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. I guess I just need to try to get a commitment, make a motion for a commitment to partner with the Tourism Center for $2,500 for that tournament in October. Motion by Terry, he is second.
Second.
All thager? Any opposed?
Thank you, guys. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the help. Next thing we have is, we wanted to talk a little bit about our veterans banner. You know, there's been a change in how handled now. The veterans that were taken care of before is not doing that anymore. Russell Springs is taking on, Hootie Stevens is doing, they're part of the banners, taking orders for them. I know the price has went up from $125 to $150. I've kind of listened to some of the new rules and stuff they have with it. I think their, their commitment is they take the orders, get them made, city council, whatever. But they're looking at like a four-year thing on the banners, you know? They figure that's about the lock of it and keeping them for four years. And then they'll take those down and put new up or, you know? So I guess what we need to think about is what does Jamestown want to do as to our part? Do we want to try to send people through Russell Springs, you know, through Hootie and try to, anybody that wants banners in Jamestown to try to send that to them? Or do we want to try to do something here in the office to take care of it ourselves? Or what are your all's thoughts on how we need to look at? I think we need to, I think it's a good thing we need to continue doing it. Definitely think that it's something that we need to continue because we have a lot of interest in it, a lot of people.
Is he going to make it himself or is he going to outsource it?
I don't know. He's just, he's just in charge of taking the orders, getting them made. So I don't, I don't know who, even who they had to make on. But he's in charge of getting them made. Then after they're made, then they hang, the city hangs on. Sorry, we don't anymore about that.
I just know Frank called me. He said that Russell Springs, that part of the program, Jamestown doesn't sell banners. They, they needed ten banners to put an order in. He didn't think that we would sell a banner, it would take so long that he didn't want to, he didn't want to just deal with Jamestown in general. That's why he talked about us partnering with Russell Springs to have, like, that way we could get enough banners ordered, you know, all at one time and we can get them hung up and they're not waiting, you know, 10 to 12 months trying to get a banner. I don't know, I don't know, I haven't talked to Hootie. I haven't talked to Eddie. I haven't talked to anybody about as far as if they're willing to partner with us.
Right.
But I think that somebody needs to know how, how to go about, you know, there's a process behind this. It's not just calling in and saying, hey, all this time it goes up. I mean, there's, there's papers that have to be produced and, and, you know, there's costs that go with all that, with the banner, with the, you know? I know we put others up in the morning, they take them down in better state. I know we, we put others up more all day, take them down better instead. Every day, they're up for those too. The weather is horrible. I mean, now they're talking about a four-year life, that's probably, that's, that's getting it out of them. We take them up, put them down, it takes three guys about all day to change the banners that we have. So, you know, you're, you've got three guys, the equipment running, diesel in the, in the backhoe. So I can see that, you know, the cost. You know, I, I know there was some upward back cost, but I, I see the cost, you know, it's the cost. Cost of banner plus operations. But as far as Hooty doing it for us, I, I don't know, that's something like we probably, we can talk to them about and go through them, and we, I mean, they can still come through us, they can go straight through him, and he can get them back to us, you know. This, this banner, they, they want this banner on in Russell Springs, and they come back to us. There's a, there's a lot to, you know, putting the banners up and, and, you know, there's, there's where to put them, run out of poles as far as like just right here in town. It's going to have to, you're going to have to look at extending, you know, out, I guess out in the community just a little bit, instead of being right here on, on the square and, and coming in, in and out on there for, you know, four weeks.
Well, now, ordering them through Frank, Honor Guard, they had that ten men, ten orders. So it sounded to me like maybe Hooty's just going to take over what they were doing.
That's the way I took it too. I'm not, I hadn't talked, like I said, I hadn't talked to Hooty. I talked to Frank when he called, and he was pretty much like, you know, he, he really didn't, we were too small pretty much to hang on to for him to do.
And article and paper, but.
He said Russell Springs took this over, Hooty was going to take over. And so, I mean, it's more, however you all decide to do it, it's.
Of course, we would have to make sure that, you know, that they're, if we want to just send the orders to them and then take care of it, if they're willing to do that. If not, then, you know, but is that the route we want to go? If, do we want to? What's your all's thoughts on how?
Well, here, here's, I ordered one, and I had to wait until he got an order of ten
Right.
before he could submit your order. With being the whole county, or city, both cities being involved in it, it didn't take that long to get an order of ten. But if, if he's talking about Jamestown, you know, not having, it may take six, eight months to get that order of ten. So.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, with both cities together, it's going to be a lot easier to get the order, get them out, and get the banners put up and, and everything. But that's just something, you know, if that's the route you all want to try to go, then I need to try to get with Eddie and, and see if they're willing to, we take the orders, and then take care of it, and send us the banners, and we put them up? Or what, what process we want to?
I think that would probably be the best approach is to just, you know, try to get Hooty to take care of the orders for Jamestown too, when they come in, just send it to us and let us.
People call here, and we, you know, of course, I know my towers, and I know they have to have a discharge paper from the Army, they have to present that. And I know with Russell Springs, which kind of works with what they're doing with the veterans cemetery, they collect the discharge papers whenever they get the banners, they have them all filed, and then something happens and they want to be buried in the veteran cemetery, they've got the paperwork there. You know, so they, I think also along with what they're doing with the cemetery, they're also, they're collecting the paperwork up front. So, but just however you all want to, if you want me to get with Eddie and see if they're interested.
I know they had one up with my dad, or my dad at there at Russell Springs. Of course, he has addresses at Russell Springs, you know.
Right. So if that's the way you all want to proceed, I'll get with him and see if you want to try to do something separate.
It's like if he's going to take care of it, they need to make sure that whoever's purchasing can say what town that would be.
Yeah, that would be all.
I'm sure Barry, if he purchases one, you know, if it's put in Russell Springs, he'd rather be in Jamestown.
Yeah. But you'll have to highlight it.
Garage.
You don't love the marriage.
Yeah.
And if they like, people call in, do we want to take the orders? Do we send them to him, or do we, to make sure, you know, that?
Can get all the papers, it might be better, not like, you'd have a list of the people that wanted to be here.
I've had a lot of people ask me about it just lately, you know, that's called or wanted to know what to do about seeing that new banner. And when I say a lot, I'm talking through the floor, but, you know, it's been quite a few just all the months, people inquiring about it. So, so if you all want me to get with Russell Springs and see if that's the route you all want to go to try to do that, or what's your all's thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, we can do it on our own, it's just the thing of this, whoever, whoever he was getting, make those, they had.
Get them quicker that way.
Yeah, had them in.
Yeah, time factor, yeah.
If this, a possi- I know of, of a person that's in, gone into business and, and is making banners and, and different types of things, which would be a possibility, if this don't work out, then he is local. And I think so, for that, probably to, to make them also.
See what, you know, I don't know, you just check to see what the price is.
Yes, whatever, I don't want to mention it to one, to one. I can check with you while you're doing that.
Well, you check, and I'll check with them to see if it's a possibility, because if they don't want to partner on, I'm sure I.
Yeah, well, if they don't want to partner.
But if they did, you want to, then we would have something, you know. So we might have an idea, but, so we'll do that.
Do it on our own.
I'll talk to Eddie and see, and if you want to check on that, then we'll kind of pay you instead. Makes me here sometime, try to have more information that we're working on. The only other thing that I have, just kind of, I, I've had just some different people talk to me about like to form another like this committee for people to work on a like this. I've had a couple, two or three people that's interested, that said they'd like to be on the committee. I, I think it's a good idea to get people in the towns, ideas of things they'd like to see happen. Everybody has new ideas and different things, so, you know, anybody that wants to be involved, you know. We need to, if they want to, I think it's a good idea. But so what's your all's thoughts on trying to maybe get a like this committee together to start working, work, because maybe it's time, isn't it? We're done having to start a whole one right now without entertainment. You don't get them booked early, you get left out, don't get anybody. So we're already starting to look and check out some possibilities, but.
Lisa likes it, I was joking, but Lisa, she does a great job. And it takes a long time to get to runners, I know, and, and does an outstanding job.
Yeah, she does. So if that's a, you know, that's good, I think, you know, I think it's a good idea. I think anybody that wants to be involved, especially when people asking and wants to be involved, I think it's a good idea. So maybe that's, anybody has any people that ask about it, or do you know, has any other ones of people that they want, want us to contact about being on for like this? And then we'll try to start with some meetings set up. It's worked well for us in the past, I have a meeting right before.
Yeah, that's what I fixed the day, right before the county.
Yeah. So if anybody has anybody or knows anybody, just give me a call or something, and I'll put some names down and try to contact people and see if we can, we meet together.
I want us to keep singing and praying, serving.
There we go, I'll talk, I'll learn it.
Do you have anything?
No, just the, the computer thing, but we, I don't have all the pieces together for that, so hopefully next month we can get that to you.
Right.
The, the mobile data terminals, I got the last email today, so.
And what we're talking about, Jeff and I have met a few times, and we're talking about there's some need that they have for some computers to go in the police vehicles and some things that need updated. And so he's getting us some price together, and we'll have kind of a, something put together with what they need, what it will do, the effects of how much it's going to help, and, and, you know, you just got to stay on top of these things. Got to have what you need to work, and got to have what you need to run, keep the city running. So he's working on that. Once he gets all that together, we'll get some numbers and talk about what he's wanting to do and what we need to try to do to keep everything for the police department going. You guys have anything, anything about water department, or anything that you want to talk about, or I?
We'll request you after, so.
All right, nobody has anything? Any motion to adjourn?
Okay.
You second?
Thanks.